Seven oh four. We will call a meeting to order and I want to let everyone know we are being recorded and we'll be told about it at a later date. Okay, so my only report is I'm glad the government is finally apparently going to do their jobs, so we'll move on and do our jobs. Did anyone have any comments in the minutes that we just threw in? Nope. Okay, so we'll approve the October 2nd minutes. There are warrants on the table and I guess there's a line item transfer.
There is a line item transfer. Thank you for telling me where it was. We are needing to transfer one thousand five hundred and five dollars from the curriculum adoption line to the acquisition and improvement of equipment line. And this will be to purchase some equipment for a student who is new to our district, but we need some audio equipment and system to be purchased. All the systems that we currently have are in use and this is a requirement. And there wasn't sufficient money allocated in that particular line in order to do that. So we'll transfer that amount of money from curriculum adoption in order to make that happen. So I'd recommend approval of that.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Our NEST's superintendent's report?
Yes. I've asked Mr. Long to have joined us today because as you know, Mr. Long has been doing some work with the Green Committee and we wanted to give the committee another update because last meeting we talked about basically assuring our compliance with new policy around vehicles and getting fuel efficient vehicles. And the Green Committee continues to work to develop and put in place the policies and commitments that are necessary for them to apply for some grant funding. So Mr. Long is here to talk about that in more detail just to keep you aware of the situation and I thought this would be a good time for him to do that.
Yeah, the Green Committee's task force is set to present the proposed twenty percent reduction for energy use for the town at the next board of select meetings meeting. And their timeline looks like, you know, the major deadline is the end of the month for them to get into this round for designation to be completed. The twenty percent reduction actually will be a fifteen percent over the next five years and they may get adjusted as they go along to get to that twenty percent. But the initial submission will be for at least fifteen percent. And the school department will be asked to concur with the submission after the board selects an adopt for this energy reduction plan. The funding for the plan is going to come from a variety of locations. Some items will be out of the operational budget over the next five years. Some items will be capital requests. Some items will be funded by the Green Committee's grant process. We're expecting to get somewhere around one hundred and forty-five to one hundred and fifty-five thousand in the first round. And there may be, there would likely be subsequent rounds that the town would be able to apply for. And then also Unitil and Nash will provide some assistance with energy rebate funds that we can apply for. So that's where all the funding mechanisms will be coming from. The exact funding, each of the energy conservation measures that we're proposing hasn't been decided yet and that actually would be kind of the rolling thing that this is a five-year program and as grant funds come in, we'll make decisions about where those grant funds are allocated. But the school department, the items that we're recommending are going to be for three buildings. Would be for the Turkey Middle School, Lunenburg Primary School and the Brooks House. The bulk of the work would probably be at the middle school and the primary school. Primary school, we have four energy conservation measures that we're going to propose. Those would be for some work that we actually already have done and could take credit for already as well as some other ones. So they would be the exterior LED lighting, which we did in April. We take credit for that. We are looking to do some interior LED improvements using Monitex students and some of that will likely happen this year. We are on Monitex on schedule and we haven't quite scoped the project based upon how much rebates we're expected to get from Unitil. So that's still working right now, but we are expecting that that would net about nine thousand kilowatt hour reduction per year by doing those interior changes. There's a much larger change for the interior, which would be changing two foot by two foot fluorescent fixtures over to LEDs. And that would be a much larger savings, but involve probably a lot more fixtures. About one hundred and eighty fixtures throughout all areas of the school and save about thirteen thousand five hundred kilowatt hours in a year. There's also some changes for the control system, which would be actually at no cost to us. It was something I can do and save us, save us a little bit, not a lot. Save us less than four thousand, oh sorry, less than four hundred kilowatt hours in a year, but it's just something we can do and it would save us something. At the middle school, we're pretty much looking for a very similar type of set of measures. The exterior LEDs, which we did last April, would be counted. We did some interior stairway lighting with LEDs. That would also be counted. We were proposing to do lobby, a lobby retrofit of all the fixtures in the lobby and the front awning and kitchen in this year using Monitex teams and us picking up the cost of the fixtures. We also have, we look at probably a little further out, we'd be putting variable speed drives on the pumps that control the heating system. And that's a, that's a pretty big savings, but they're also in the more expensive measures. And that one saves about fifteen thousand kilowatt hours in a year. And then we are going to be looking to do a replacement air compressor. The one we have at the middle school that controls the HVAC system is at the end of this slide and we expect only to get one more year on the existing one. So we look to get an energy efficient air compressor and replace that and get about a thirty percent savings by doing that in energy usage. We also would do some changes for how we're controlling circulation pumps out there. And that's all, that's actually one of the bigger, bigger improvements. We look to do a lead and lag on the two sets of pumps we have. And that would save about fifty-one thousand kilowatt hours in a year. A pretty big savings, but although those are really big pumps and being able to cycle them back would save us quite a bit. And then some envelope tightening on the building on the first floor. We have, do have a couple of things that are holes in walls where either a killing had been put through or an exhaust can, somebody wanted, was put through, we have to close those up. Weather stripping on some of the doors and make sure that we don't have any other areas where we get cold air infiltrated. Not a big savings, but at a relatively low cost one. And then at the Brooks House, it falls with just a couple of minor things, but not a lot of savings there at all. But some lighting changes, we do have a fixture on the exterior of the building that can be changed out. Maybe a little bit on the inside on the first floor. And then some insulation and some pipe insulation. Those things are relatively low cost and would help us save some energy. And then the big one is Lunenburg High School, or middle school, high school project. We're showing that in the plan. It has a huge effect on the plan in a couple of different ways. There's the huge energy savings that come from the step up to a new school on the heating side. So a lot of gas savings on the, countering against that is the projected electricity use. Initially, the engineers came back, said they thought that this building is going to use about eight kilowatt hours per square foot. And I looked at that and I didn't think that was even close. So I pushed back on it and they came back and said, well, how about six? We looked at that one more time and I'm still not convinced that that's a good number. To give you an idea of where we are, the primary school uses about four kilowatt hours per square foot in a year. The middle school uses about four point three. And then the existing high school, elementary school is about three point three. I don't think we're going to be in a year three point three, but I'm thinking five is probably close to where we'll operate. And that's with, you know, tight control of the building, making sure that, you know, when things aren't needed, they're going off of the HVAC or lighting. But at the same time, so we're basing on this idea that we would use about five kilowatt hours per square foot. And there is precedence to being at that level. There were some, some studies done for the MSBA that indicates that that would be on the very, very efficient level of what new schools are being built at, but that's kind of where I think we'll be. So we figured that in as well. So right now, we're not, we're still developing this plan and it's going to be finalized hopefully by, by the end of this week. We have to bring in a little of the town, the town debt, but we think we'll be at fifteen percent. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that because we will be coming back and the superintendent will be asked to sign off that this plan is part of the school's plan for energy reduction over the next five years.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for John?
Yes, the Brooks House. With the building reuse committee deliberations, we're not sure what we'd be doing with the Brooks House. So if this were to go forward, is it all or nothing, or can pieces be taken out?
This plan is going to get more or less looked at every year for the next five years until things will change on it. So if the Brooks House was sold, you know, we would pretty much just write that off as complete production. But, you know, the measures that we have there are pretty minor, obviously, because we don't have, the energy use is very, very low because there's only a few rooms in use.
I also wanted to call to the committee's attention that this past Sunday, the Lunenburg Athletic Hall of Fame had their induction ceremony. I put one of the books from the induction ceremony, brought one for each of you. Mr. Spatafino and I both had the opportunity to attend and it was another just really great celebration of a lot of the very positive accomplishments of Lunenburg High School Athletics in the past, obviously, because it is the Hall of Fame. But a good gathering in terms of the discussions of what Lunenburg has meant to a lot of the individuals that are being recognized, some that are still here in the community and others that maybe are living elsewhere at this point in time. So I know as superintendent, I always find it very informative and a very proud moment for the community because certainly these athletes, while they have excelled in athletics, have also excelled in many other areas as well and contributing to their communities and a lot of them here. And their families are always very happy to have this recognition for them as well. Some are, of course, honored posthumously. So it was just another great celebration and we were happy to be part of that and really want to express our appreciation to the Hall of Fame committee who really puts a lot of work in into making this happen. So just for your information.
That's great.
And I want to introduce Sophie Holman to you. And Sophie is going to be, you know, our student representative has started doing a mid-year changeover. And Abby wasn't able to be here, so Sophie's here for her first meeting and she'll be continuing with us after the first of the year and be the regular attendee. So welcome. And what do you have to share with us about what's going on at Lunenburg High School?
So homecoming, as people probably know, is October twenty-sixth on a Saturday. The parade starts at one o'clock instead of twelve-thirty this year, so we want to let people know it starts at one and the homecoming book will be maybe at three o'clock. The Spanish club upcoming, like a coat drive, so that'll be starting up soon. Today, the, so October sixteenth, the sophomores and juniors took the PSATs, so.
Can you tell us more about the coat drive in terms of where those will be collected or do you have some of the details?
I'm pretty sure, I'm not positive when it will be starting, but soon, like maybe next week. And they're collecting, each one's collecting coats like that are not used or are in good shape and they're going to the shelters, I believe, and to help out.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. Mike, school building committee report?
Certainly. Since our last meeting, we did have a meeting with the working group. As we discussed at the last meeting, we reviewed and approved the cost estimate, schematic design for submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And as part of our deliberations on that, we included a working group to take some time looking more, in some more depth at the cost estimates and design to see if there's any areas for cost savings that we can find. Want to make sure that we've done our, we've done our due diligence in seeking out the most cost efficient, most educationally sound project. We did make some progress. There were some possible cost savings identified. A working group is going to stay at it. The, our designer, Charlie Hay of Tapay Associates, is going back and taking a look at the designs and seeing if there are other areas of cost savings that can be found. And we intend to meet again, I forgot that date in front of me. I think it's the twenty?
Fourth.
Fourth, right. And at that point, we'll take a look at where we are in terms of identifying potential cost savings. We're going ahead with the submission to the MSBA because obviously, you know, as long as we don't spend more money there, happy that we're spending less money. We are also continuing our efforts at public education. We attended the finance committee meeting, also on the tenth, to answer, to present them with the update on the project and to answer their questions. We have other public information efforts upcoming. One of the things that we're, have asked people if they volunteer for is to hold sort of an open house coffee in their home for their neighbors or friends in order for people to sit down and, you know, have a more informal way of asking questions. And so we'll be attending, when Shapira has volunteered to open her home for a coffee on Friday, we'll be, we'll be attending that and thank her for that. We have scheduled our first forum, our first public forum for the high school, which will be October the thirtieth at seven PM. We have in November, again, in order to have as many separate venues as possible, we also have ourselves scheduled for November the sixteenth from ten AM to two PM, the Lunenburg Library Community Room. And again, it's going to be a more informal way for people to come in and ask questions, look at the designs, you know, voice their questions or their concerns in a less, you know, formal kind of setting. And so, you know, we'll be, you know, coffee, cake and questions.
Great.
Then on Thursday, December the fifth, we have back to back that day in the high school, two forums. One in the afternoon at three PM in the school cafeteria. And then again, that evening at seven o'clock in the auditorium. I also had the pleasure last week of going to the pancake breakfast over at the Eagle House and brought the designs and the, and the handout. We have a brand new handout, I probably should have thought to bring some along. It's a little brochure that, you know, contains the frequently asked questions and copies of the design. And it's our latest version of the frequently asked questions because that just keeps kind of, you know, we actually keep adding to it as, as people forward questions to us. So, and again, there was a lot of, you know, there, as you, you know, I'm sure you'd not be surprised where people were concerned about what, you know, what it was going to cost and how that was going to impact them. But there were also many people that voiced, you know, their support for it. You know, the quote that I took away from, from my meeting was the gentleman that came in and said, somebody paid for my school. I guess it's my turn. So, you know, we're continuing the public education. We're hoping if this process goes well, that by the time we get to town meeting, people will be completely informed about the project and we'll have a real discussion about, you know, what we're, what we need to do as a town.
I agree. Thanks, Mike. And thanks for all the hard work you put into this. I know it's taken you many hours out of your life and I for one appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. So we have a proposed trip to New York City.
Thanks.
Mrs. Wardwell, could you remind us, this would be the second time such a trip has gone out. The first one was year before.
Four years ago. So we did a similar trip in two thousand and ten. That was only one night and two days and this trip would be two nights and three days. And so all of the students that are currently at the high school were eighth grade or younger the last time we took this trip. So they've never been. And it's a, certainly a jam packed itinerary, but we tried to include some sightseings, some historical things and a couple of really, really great performance opportunities that would happen on that Saturday. The first one, which is the Broadway Classroom Workshop, is one that we've done before. The exact workshop might be slightly different, but we were involved with the same organization last time. The one that's different is a possible performance on the USS Intrepid, which would be incredible. A once in a lifetime experience for the students and myself. So we'd really be looking forward to that. And, you know, it includes a lot of things that we certainly could change. This is just a tentative itinerary. Faith Merchant is the traveling trip that we've been working with to try to put something together. I did get some price quotes from two other companies. One that we worked with last time and another one that Jesse Beardmore actually uses for her trips out of the country. And their prices were less, but it was a shorter trip. And so if we went with a three day trip, it would be right up around there. Faith's estimate is about six hundred and sixty-five dollars per person. However, that includes the chaperones paying zero. And obviously, we would ask the chaperones to pay something. We just didn't have an exact number. And so we decided, let's go with this including everything and then we can decide how much we would like the chaperones to chip in. Last time when we did the New York trip, we were trying to remember the exact cost of the trip, but I believe the chaperones paid one fifty for each. And obviously, prices have gone up since then. So we would ask the chaperones to pay, I don't know, two hundred, maybe two fifty. We'd have to talk about exactly that now. It also includes a Broadway musical, which we didn't get to do last time. And I don't know if you're familiar with the movie Once or the story, but it's about musicians and Jenny Wickham and I, who is helping me in the trip. It, you know, the actors and actresses are all playing instruments and dancing around on stage, which would be, obviously be very appropriate for my students. And I was listening to the music this afternoon and it's fantastic. So that would be great. But those ticket prices are a little on the high side. Those ticket prices are one-ten and this six hundred and sixty-five dollars includes that. So if we went on a different, went to a different show with a different price tag, that obviously would reduce the price. This also includes two buses and currently we have sixty-nine students in the band and chorus. And we're assuming that not all students will go. I would love if all students went, but you know that not everybody will go. And so if fifty-five students went, which is what Faith based this price on, it would require that we had two buses that were not full. So we have a letter that if we get an initial approval on this, I would send a letter with the itinerary to the students and their parents, just so that they see a general idea. And do you think your student will be going based on the price and based on the fact that we will offer some fundraising opportunities to help defray some of those costs? We currently have a citrus drive running, which part of that, part of what each student sells would be put toward their trip. And then we would hope to do one in the winter to help lower the cost for each student. If we didn't have fifty-five students going, we might have to cap it off at about forty-eight. And then the rest of the bus would be chaperones and then we would all fit on one bus and then that six hundred and sixty-five would be reduced again. The bus company is the same bus company that Faith uses for the DC trip and she's been really, really happy with them and I trust her opinion on that as well. And, you know, there are also a couple of activities on here. You know, on the first day where we tried to do some sights and sounds of New York City rather than performing the minute we arrive, which we could remove from the itinerary if, you know, we get a lot of responses back saying, there's no way we can do six hundred and sixty-five dollars Jenny and I were just talking about. Maybe we don't do the NBC Studios tour. We walk through Rockefeller Center, walk through and point, there's the today's show studio, there is this and continue on our walk. So that would be another way to reduce the cost. Faith tried to include as much as we could so that that would be the maximum for the trip and then we can always go down from there.
What was the price last time?
That's what we were trying to figure out. I thought it was three hundred. Jenny's remembering something like three eighty-five, but I have it on my computer. So somewhere between three and four hundred dollars. It was also only one night and two days. And the other thing was when I initially got the other itineraries from the other companies, because they tried to pack everything into two really full days, you know, we leave New York City at nine PM on Saturday and return here at?
After midnight.
Two. Which isn't my favorite thing. Jenny knows it's not your favorite thing either. So, you know, that would bring the cost down, but it adds a whole slew of other concerns. And one of the things I remember from the last trip we took, we saw a lot, we did a lot. We had great performance opportunities, but it was constantly go, 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 go. And so by the end, it was almost like the kids would have enjoyed a little bit of downtime.
Yeah.
So this one, although it's spread over a couple of days, we could certainly take a few things out to give them some of that downtime. You know, whether it's just walking on their own, like when we do the Liberty Science Center, you know, they'll have some free time there where it's not constantly structured.
Our policy requires that the school committee would need to give the initial approval to any trip prior to any kind of advertising or discussion with, with the students. And so that's because of the timelines, in terms of pulling this together and our meeting schedule, we added this to the agenda when we revised it on Tuesday when we came back from the holiday. But my recommendation is this was very well received. It was an extraordinarily powerful opportunity for the students, the music students in terms of where they were able to perform, the benefits that they gave, they gained from that Broadway workshop that took place. And, you know, going to New York is just one of those things that really can be a very providing cultural experience for the students. Karen, can you remind me how many adults would go with the fifty-five students? Because typically we would look at it about at least ten, wouldn't we?
Yeah, ten to one. And then we would also have myself, Brian Spatafino has offered to go again, and then a nurse. Whether it's a parent going that is a nurse or, you know, somebody has a aunt, uncle, grandparent that is a nurse as well, which we did last time and was fascinating. It was comforting knowing that there was someone there to handle these situations.
My assistant, you did talk about Mr. Doster, you did talk about if there were students that needed some help paying for it. You haven't met them doing that?
Yeah, the musicators have always been incredibly supportive. You know, with any of the fundraisers, we always encourage all of the students to sell, but if this is something that the students are seriously interested in, that's even more incentive. And the citrus drive goes until November 8th. So, you know, even if this were handed out in the next week or so, if it gets approved, then those that haven't sold but really want to go would have, hopefully, the drive to sell because they know whatever percentage will be taken out of their cost of the trip. And then once we have, you know, a yes on the head count, they would have a better idea of exactly what that cost will be. And once we decide what chaperones will chip in, that will bring that down. But the musicators have been 100% supportive all the way with everything, so.
Any questions, comments?
Recommend initial approval. And then it's, I believe that at least 30 days prior to the trip going out, that you'd come back to the school committee and get the final approval. And we can talk about the final numbers and final costs at that point in time. So I just really appreciate the work that you've put into it. I don't think it all do.
Well, Jenny's been a huge help, and Faith has been wonderful. And one of the reasons we really liked the idea of working with Faith was because we could actually sit down with her face-to-face rather than just via email.
Over the phone or via email, yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is, we would probably do a payment plan so that the students and students aren't paying upfront, something like December 1st, January 1st, February 1st, split it up a bit. So at least 30 days beforehand to schedule.
Okay, is there a motion on the table?
So moved. Aye.
We do. I wanted to call to your attention that the Connor Lorenz Fund, Memorial Fund, has donated $2,000 again this year, and that money is donated to help defray the costs of trips, like the one that we just spoke about. And so what we'll do is, typically, we've talked about Nature's Classroom and the Washington DC trip, but the Lorenz family really says it's, they will leave that up to the school committee to make a determination about where they would like those funds apportioned to. But they do do it with, under the directed giving that they do give is generally around supporting those kinds of trips that students are taking, particularly the ones staying local, as in not leaving the US, that kind of local. Also, there were several donations that I wanted to call to your attention that were provided for Nature's Classroom, and we want to recognize the Alhambert Community Council who donated $360, Gemma's Carrier $50, Turkey Hill Lions Club $400, and the Lizzick family $180 that was donated to help support scholarships for students who attend the Nature's Classroom. Then we also continue to receive funds from Target under the Take Charge of Education Fund, and we have $180.59 that has been received that will be put, it's distributed between Turkey Hill and the primary school. It's where we distributed those funds, and that will go into their unrestricted gift fund. And they can utilize that for scholarships. They could utilize that for improvements to the school. Those kinds of, use of those funds would go through the school council first, and of course, they go through the purchasing procedures of the town as well. But would like to recommend acceptance with our thanks of those various donations, both restricted and unrestricted.
Is there a motion to accept with gratitude?
So moved.
I'll listen bigger.
Aye.
And now we need to talk about negotiating team to work with the Professionals Association. It's time to negotiate another contract. Mrs. Collins, do you have a recommendation?
Well, we've received the letter from them, and they would like to get started. And I think that would be very helpful in terms of the budget development, et cetera, going forward. And, you know, in the past, the committee has sometimes participated in the negotiations, and other times, they've delegated myself and Ms. Curly, the business official, to participate in negotiations. I think I would recommend to you that if one or two of the committee members could participate, I think that there are some potential changes in this particular contract, that it would be good to have committee representation.
We're also likely to have other negotiations later on this year. So who would like to volunteer to participate in the negotiating team?
Can I volunteer, Todd?
You can volunteer.
Mr. Blake would love to do that.
Mr. Blake, would you love to do that?
I can sign up, but my time's pretty tight this year so far. It's been tough. So you can sign me up, but there's a good chance that with the other obligations, that it'll be very tough to find. We can't find time to do the policy committee right now, so.
Are those meetings during the day?
They're usually after school, yeah. So.
So I can, I can try and make the ones that you don't make, so get them tagged to you. Okay, does that work?
Looks familiar.
That works for me.
Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering, Todd. Yeah, I do.
Okay, we don't need to vote on that, right?
No.
Okay, we have a bullying policy update.
We do. There have been some changes to that particular legislation. And I put first reading on this, and that probably, I may want to say we really don't have anything to bring to you necessarily for first reading, because we're still working with the school council to look at some of the changes. Because the changes in the bullying law really impact some more inclusionary language of pointing out that the law applies to staff as well. Now, we felt that the law always has applied to staff, but now the language is actually incorporated into the documents themselves, where before it had not been. Because all our personnel policies, you know, are in place to make sure that the professional behavior and the appropriate kind of behavior is in place in our schools. And the part of all of our staff that we have the employee handbooks with, which spell those out in very explicit terms. So this, while it's being included, it's not a new concept, I guess, is what I want to say. So we're looking at, and I've proposed to you, there are some things that do need to get clear in terms of our policies and procedures. And one of them is simply around if any staff member, if there was a concern or an allegation brought about a possible bullying by a staff member, then the building principal would be the individual that would conduct that investigation and would make sure that the other aspects of the plan, in terms of making sure of appropriate parent notification, making sure of a safety plan being in place for the person that was targeted, the student that was targeted. All of those aspects of what the formalized plan called for is the responsibility of the building principal. And that would be the same for a staff member that works in that building principal's building. However, if it were the principal or the assistant principal that the allegations were brought against, then the superintendent or their designate would need to conduct that investigation and make sure that there's a safety plan and all the other aspects of the plan are in place. Likewise, if it was against the superintendent that an allegation or complaint was filed, the school committee or their designate would be responsible for that. So we felt that bringing this aspect of the policy to you right now, I kind of put in the school committee chair as the person that would, you know, be responsible for that, just as a point of starting the discussion, is why I put that in there. Because obviously, I suppose any member of the school committee would, could receive complaint, but in terms of conducting the investigation, making findings of fact and any kind of other determinations, there needs to be a point person on that. And so that's how it reads right now in terms of, we've inserted it just into the language that would appear in parent and staff handbooks, where you start to see some changes. And I'm not looking for a vote on this tonight. I'm wanting to offer this information and give you a context and have you be able to see how it might begin to translate out around the various handbooks and documents and policies that we have. And the handbooks, I think, are one of the most obvious places. It speaks to the fact that staff includes anybody working in the schools, anybody working and providing extracurricular activities, so all coaches, and any kinds of advisors, after-school advisors, music teachers, music lesson teachers, extended day personnel. It doesn't speak to volunteers. It doesn't use that necessarily in terms of that. But the school committee could obviously perhaps provide that additional language to it. The law didn't include volunteers as school staff necessarily.
So I think, you know, the intent when we originally passed the policy was to include everybody who's in our building, which was great. Now that we're being very specific, I think we have to make sure we cover everybody so we don't inadvertently leave some law that we intended originally to cover, but, you know, consult. So I guess, why don't we put this on the web just to give people an opportunity to start giving feedback? But it sounds like we should all read this and give feedback before the next meeting.
Yeah, and think about, you know, where that, you know, how you might want to consider the complaint process at the different levels. It does say designate, so, you know, should you, I suppose that could be your, the school attorney, for example, but yeah. It speaks to also the ongoing efforts. And I think we do have some time because we're approaching that time where we do our annual look at this and updating of the plan and those kinds of things. So I wanted to get it on the table for discussion. As Mr. Blake mentioned, we have been having a little bit of a challenge getting our policy committee together. And the policy is an important area, and we want to continue to try to keep things moving along as much as possible. So.
Yes.
And we can, yeah, because we post those meetings and everything, I don't know that we could necessarily do it via a remote access, but I'll check that policy because I know the town has that policy. Just see.
That's fairly limited.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty restricted.
I'm not sure the subcommittees actually would do that. I guess I can give you the chair.
Can I be an alternate for either one of them? Well, when do you meet? You mean at night?
But we're not.
We are just trying to find the time to.
Typically, we'll meet either before, usually before this meeting. But we have not been able to.
So how about if you spend the next, I guess, almost three weeks till we meet again, right?
It is.
And see if we can get a policy meeting scheduled. If we can't, then we should put on the agenda a discussion of reconfiguring the policy committee for next time.
Okay.
Because, you know, there are compliance issues that we'd have to deal with, as well as just regular policy meetings. Okay.
I did want to note that, you know, there is recognition in including staff in this, that it's obviously that there are, there's a change, that there's a difference between bullying and acceptable managerial kinds of behaviors designed to correct misconduct, instill accountability. I'm reading directly from the text in the school setting. So, you know, one of the interesting things about the bullying definition is it typically includes this notion of imbalance of power. And that's inherent in any kind of student-faculty kind of interaction. And as we said, we need to keep safe schools for everybody in place. So it does present, I think, informational and educational opportunities for everyone to understand the nature of how we interact respectfully with each other and one another, and then maintain a safe environment for everyone. So, and one that's conducive to education. Okay?
Okay. So we have some materials to discard?
We do. We have 410 books. Thank you, Sophie. Thank you. We have 410 books that Ms. Switfield has continued to work through the collections of Turkey Hill Middle School, which included the TCP collection as well, the ones that didn't go down to the primary school because they were more appropriate for that. But the age and condition of these books, the last recorded circulation date, and what she refers to as an unattractive format. So it's to keep the collection refreshed and to have space to bring in new materials. And so I recommend that we dedicate these access at this time.
Where do they go?
You know, we have at times, for those that aren't obviously needing to just go to the trash, and there are several of those, we have done donations to local book efforts. And actually, I had an individual contact me just recently who has special connections working in Gandhi that was looking for possible school materials and textbooks or any other kinds of books that may be of good enough quality to reuse in that effort. If you recall, we did this, Pete set up a situation, Mr. McAuliffe, with athletic directors around that did some of the uniforms. But I think that we'll contact this individual and have that individual have access to these as well. But we do try to get a reuse if possible.
Okay, we have no old business. So what to public comment? Anybody have any comment from the public? All right, reports. Ben Callen, I didn't go, but it sounds like you did, Mike?
I did. As I said, you know, we did our presentation and they had, you know, some questions. I think the biggest questions were around the budget impact. And you're packing, I don't know. You'll see what the town manager has developed based on certain assumptions about what the individual impact would be on the average homeowner, you know, broken out basically by certain. By certain break-ins. And as you can see, the first one is the 20-year term, and roughly 60% of the homeowners fall into these first three categories, which is up to a single family value of $249.9. And they're, they would be below $52 a month in, $52 or below in impact if the school project goes forward at its current cost. And that, and then there's the 30-year term, which, again, 60% would be paying $44 and change or less.
So how conservative was Curry and the choice of interest rate?
I believe that that was around 4%.
Four to four.
Four to four and a half, is what she said.
And I even had a further exchange with her today. We recently, yes, just yesterday, got some very good news about our credit worthiness. And I was curious as to how that, you know, impacted our long-term. And, you know, the long and short of it is it wouldn't have a significant impact on, you know, what that would mean in terms of the monthly payment. So this gives you some idea right now what the impact looks like. And then there's just some backup data that goes along with it. There's a, some data on our current debt and when that debt gets retired. And then, you know, additionally, they'll, you know, they'll, there's some thing that will show you what the total cost of the borrowing will be. And that is important in the board of selectmen making the decision whether to turn to twenty years or thirty years.
That really is their call.
The board of selectmen and the town manager are those.
Town treasurer.
Town treasurer, I'm sorry.
The school council, have they been?
Primary school council meets again on October third.
DTO?
Meets Monday, October twenty-first. I know they're working frantically pulling together the haunted house for November, but.
Policy subcommittee, capital planning, you know they're working?
Well, we met today.
Any things we need to hope for?
No, no, we're working to schedule with the superintendent and John wanted to come present and. Did you get, we did, did you hear from Marion Benson? That we, we agreed, like, we can do it Thursday?
Okay, okay.
So we're going to do it, John?
Yeah. I'm not sure if we heard, like, a confirmation date.
You should, or, you know, if you don't hear, but we did. Everybody was signed with that.
We presented some dates, so, okay. Did you have a specific date?
I think it was November seventh.
Okay.
I think it's Thursday, November seventh.
Okay, wellness advisory meeting?
Hasn't met since the last time. But that committee will be involved in the update to the anti-bullying plan as well.
Sure. Paxal?
They met last Friday. I came in for a while and we just talked about, once again, we're going to be offering Tiger presentations in each of the buildings. So I let them know about that because they helped with some of that last time. I don't know that they'll be able to do that again this year. The Mackey Foundation has already indicated to us that they will make funds available to support the Tiger meeting. And we're trying to get the dates established. I think Turkey Hill will be right before the holiday break and the primary school will be after. At this point in time, I'm not certain that we'll be able to have all students involved in viewing the performances, but at least two grade levels definitely will be. And they also will be able to follow up with the in-class sessions that they do after the performances. It is possible that we might be able to engage two grade levels for one performance in each of the buildings, Turkey Hill and the primary, and two in the afternoon performance. But we would still be limited in doing classroom follow-up by the actors only to one grade level. So we're going to maximize the number of students that are able to participate in that. It's really a nice supplement and to the ongoing educational program in terms of friendship and respectful relationships and what that means.
Building reuse committee, have they?
I, well, sort of. They had a meeting last week, but it was canceled because power was out in the building. So our next meeting is, that's my bad.
Mr. Blake, may I, Dr. Brooks, you had just mentioned that they began some discussion about Brooks House as well. Because I know that the committee had talked about TCP not being, you would basically said that we probably wouldn't need this for educational services at this point in time. But I didn't know that the discussion had been held around Brooks House and wondered if we needed to put that on an agenda and have discussion about it. In some regards, we've talked about that needing to be utilized for administrative offices again, depending, potentially.
So, you know, so at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what the building reuse committee does. If we don't give up jurisdiction of the building, it will stay as part of the district. So I'm fine with them considering it. I don't know that we need to.
Everything's on the table and the committee's looking at every public building, not just.
Okay.
So litter building, town hall, E.O. house, every, you know, broad view of the entire district.
Okay, anything else? Do we have future discussion? Nope, and I don't think we have a second session meeting, do we?
We don't, we don't. And I think, well, we'll start rolling into budget presentations on November sixth. That will also be the date we'll do a superintendent's award presentation at that particular meeting as well. So that's what's coming up.
Okay, we'll also need to start thinking about scheduling some workshops. And we're going to create the plans. We all agree we need to create one more level. If we don't start eventually, we'll never achieve that, so just keep that in mind. Okay, a motion to adjourn. Sumut?